Hi, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education, Winoka School District I-3 of Woods County, Oklahoma, do hereby certify that the date, time, place of this special meeting was filed in the office of clerks of Woods County, Oklahoma, not less than forty-eight hours prior to the date of this set-time meeting. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, it's between Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, that the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting posted prominent public view of location of this meeting. Witness on hand and seal of this school district's committee of the day of March 2016.
Here.
Here.
Clint.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Mindy.
Present.
On here. Discussion and review of proposed building projects.
Okay, if anybody's in, and Mindy and I've already, we talked earlier, or last week after the meeting, and she had some thoughts and kinda, I think, wanted to discuss, and I haven't asked her, she still wants to discuss, but anyway, discussed our idea about putting a weight room, and I think it's been talked about once, but, you know, talked about the options of putting the weight room on the back of the practice gym, and then Clint has got some, he's talked to me since the last meeting about some ideas about, about the track, I don't know exactly what all he wants to present tonight, but he's got it on computer in, in our TV room where we do some of our off-campus classes, so we can, we can go down there and look at that at the appropriate time, kinda what he's got to show us, so. Has anybody else thought about anything that after we, and Mindy can take care of her part, but has anybody else got anything that they've sat around, thought about in the last week? Changes, improvements?
I feel like this, I think we should look at putting the track around the football field again. I know we looked at it kind of before, but if we're going to do a new concession stand, field house, weight room at the football field, I think it would be a better, a better time if they need to do it. Another reason is the bleachers are already in place, and the concession stand will be in place.
That's, that was primarily things I wanted to discuss, you know, being last week at Covington with both track coaches, that were pretty adamant about it.
Well, I just started thinking, well, somebody asked me, "Well, are you gonna build a concession stand?" I hadn't thought about it. Are you gonna build restrooms? Well...
Well, that's the one reason, the reason why we built the concession area and bathrooms in the multipurpose building was for the purpose of the track, and that's why we built those in the front of that to start with.
I just don't like the track around the football field.
I don't either.
Too far away from the...
Not too far away.
Well, if you're sitting in the bleachers trying to watch a football game, you're adding all that other out there too, and it just takes, takes you away from it.
Takes away from the...
I admit, some places it is bad, like at Ringwood, it was really bad.
It was really bad.
At Covington, it's not bad, because the track is right up against the bleachers.
The thing I have a problem with is that, with it being around the football field, the football field fence is normally locked, and for a community to be able to use the track, it needs to be out in the open. Also, to feel like that with the inside of this track being over here, you would take away from, I mean, you would be able to utilize that for like the little soccer teams, the little football teams, those things, where it would keep it off of your football field, which has been an issue.
Yeah, it tears up football fields.
It has been an issue, and so I feel like that, you know, where, where they're proposing is the best situation. That, the thing that I was talking about with Mr. Tackett, that we had discussed before, was a weight, the weight room being, and I didn't think about it when we were here the other night, I thought about it later, being with the practice facility, that way it's neutral, or gender neutral, and that way it's not...
It's not just a football.
Not just a football weight room, I mean, I don't know, we did discuss that, right?
Yeah, and I mean, not only that, but I mean, for your field event people, your shotputters and your discus throwers and everything else, you're not gonna spend an hour and a half working on that.
Right.
You can still, you can, you could walk thirty feet and be in the weight room.
And that's what, I mean, that's, that's the one thing I thought about later after our meeting the other night, was, you know, having that weight room more on this practice facility instead of at the football field. Not to say they can't have a small...
Well, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, what about the possibility of having...
Small, yeah, like they have now at the football field, you know, they have a, a small...
A bit more, nicer, more elaborate one in the other.
Right, but anyway, that way it's, like I said, more general.
Now, you said gender neutral. Are you saying we should have a women and a men's?
No, I'm just saying, if it's in the football field house...
Yeah.
It seems to be all for the, the boys, I mean, and that's why I'm saying gender neutral, is if it's in the basketball facility, practice facility, then you're not going to be interfering with having girls and...
Well, I, I think it should be, you know, but that doesn't mean there shouldn't be one over...
No, I didn't say not, not one at all, I'm just saying, just the big facility, I feel like should be more on this practice facility than in the field house.
I kinda like to look at what's done in other places and what goes, what goes well.
Where their, you mean where their weight rooms are?
Yeah, yeah. Typically, there is a girls' weight facility, but it's usually not used as extensively, just as the nature of things goes, is the, is the boys, so. I mean, I wouldn't have a weight room with the attention of, of the main weight room on the back of the multipurpose, when the main use of it would be at the football field.
Well, the main...
I'd have one both places, I guess what I'm saying, that, you know, back in nineteen-eighty when the school was built, there was a weight room designated for the girls, built in the back of the gym, that, that's been thought of before, and I think it's a good idea.
But it was designated, but the boys and the girls basketball both use it.
Yes.
Yeah.
But it wasn't, it wasn't gender neutral. That was very important, there was a time for the girls to use it, a time for the boys to use it.
Well, and that's, that's kinda what I'm saying there, I mean, where we have a separate weight room downtown right now that the football uses, the big weight room, they still have some weights at the football field too, that they use after practice.
But the, the practice gym with it having that type of weight room is the boys are gonna use it one day, and the girls are gonna use it another day, I'm sure, basically the same situation that we're in right now, right?
Or in, I mean, different hours, or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be alternated, so the, I mean, if you've got a weight room, boys could live Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, or, or Monday and Wednesday, and the girls could live Tuesday and Thursday, when they have their practice in their gym.
We're not, we're not, that's a very small item.
Well...
In the grand scheme of things, that's a, those are pennies.
Well, when I was looking at this though, it looked like, I mean, a big majority of the facility almost had this weight room.
It is, it is.
And that's what, yeah, I mean, that's what I was looking at, and, you know, and not to say, I'm not saying that the football field shouldn't have a weight room in it.
Yeah, you're taking, you know, like you talked about taking a coach's office out here, and taking part of that weight room out, and you start, you know, you start shrinking that.
Right, so, but, and that's, that's the only thing I thought about later afterwards, but...
How far is the distance? You said the concession stand would be in the multipurpose building, which I can see now that you've said that, and maybe why that was there.
Mm-hmm.
And it has nice bathrooms also. So I'm assuming if there, when there is a track meet here, that'll be open. What's the distance? Is it too far? Should the practice gym be moved somewhere else?
Well, I mean, it...
I think it would be better to have the track closer to the multipurpose building than...
Right, and, and of course, originally, when that was built, you know, the, the...
What's the scale down here?
...goal was to...
I tried to read the scale and I...
It's two hundred feet?
So it's probably...
Yes, two hundred feet.
Yeah, it's two hundred feet, in the center of the multipurpose building.
Which by the ways, seventy yards, thirty-five yards?
Yeah, sixty, about sixty-five, yeah.
So, I mean, you know, and that's...
No, it's okay, it's just...
But originally, yeah, when that multipurpose building was built, that was the reason why that was built in front of the building, where you could still shut the doors and lock the doors to the main part of the multipurpose building and use the bathrooms and the concession stand facility in the front for the track.
Which we were already gonna move the gym and the track back closer to the multipurpose building anyway, to get it off city property, right? Isn't that, isn't that what we talked about?
Yeah, we can't really tell so much from this drawing, but it might be fine where it's at, we aren't really sure, it's close.
Well, we wouldn't, okay, I don't think we, I mean, as far as the track concession stand, it wouldn't be used so many times that I would want the kids going to the gym to have to walk farther than, than the track.
No, I was, I was actually thinking about moving it to where your safe room classrooms are, and move them somewhere else.
Well, see, at one point, I had talked about doing the classrooms and...
Because that way the gym is, the practice gym is attached, and so are the classrooms.
Is this a drainage area through here? Or is that, because originally, that's what I had talked about, is having the classrooms in this area.
I don't think it drains there.
Does it?
I don't know.
Between the multipurpose building and the school?
No.
No, I don't think it does. No, I mean, there's some minimal runoff there, but you're not talking about, it's not gonna be a river.
I think it's mostly just runoff from the top of the building.
Right. But where you pitch that roof, and you're coming towards the multipurpose building, if you add another building there, it's gonna be a lot of water coming off that roof and going over to the multipurpose building though.
And all the way you pitch that roof.
Yeah.
See, when, when they pitched it in our church, it's just going one way.
Right.
They did a...
But if we pitch it back to the north, where it's gonna line up at the back of, I mean, everything's gonna run off that way, and it'll run around the back of the school and be right back there.
I think that's more of an architectural problem.
You think you got room between the multipurpose building and the main building to put classrooms?
Well, just from the look of the scale, if the classrooms are turned sideways from the way they're sitting now, I think they'd fit, right? Because right now, we have them extending long ways out, if they were turned long ways back, I think it would...
I don't know, it's hard to tell.
Yeah, it's hard to tell with the...
I'd assume that's about a forty-foot building, just from looking at the scale.
There's, actually, it tells you in the next page, right? Forty-eight four.
That's with the corridor.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, that forty-eight four is with that hallway.
I make a suggestion, we're talking about, we're all looking at the map and, and scaling, looking at distances, I have some software that, that would be really easy to see on TV, big enough for everybody to see.
Software for the mapping?
Mm-hmm.
Would everybody like to adjourn to the, or move the meeting to the other classroom?
I would like to...
Reconvene, I would like to...
Or reconvene in the other classroom.
I would like, yeah, it's longer here to catch anybody that comes in.
This there.
That's a, this is Global Mapper, some of you guys may use this, you can zoom in and scale things, they probably use something similar to this, but you can put in different things that you want, you can measure, you can see how far it is away from things, so...
Just measure that distance right there between the school and the multipurpose building.
Why is the building shaped like that?
Right here.
It looks like a shadow.
It, it is, it is basically taken at an angle, but then, the satellite is giving it at a slight angle on the front end.
But it does have that, that piece that's out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does have that, that's where we store the tables and chairs and stuff in that area, but that, that white part you see is the shadow.
You don't have much back, well, you'd have to take the berm out, I guess.
Yeah.
Which is what you're gonna have to do on the north side too.
Is that the distance you're after?
Well, that's the closest distance, yeah.
Yeah.
Fifty-five feet?
It's plenty of room, right? Because it was forty-eight with corridor.
There's not plenty of room to construct.
No, it'll be tight constructing.
And that was for, I missed that part, was that...
Well, what we were talking about was moving this gym facility over to the north, the classrooms in between there.
Oh, okay.
That way you could move the...
The walkway between the two.
Okay.
Yeah, your corridor could just be enclosed in your walkway.
Yeah, and then I, I think it would be a forty-foot. Then, go to the other, go to the other side of the building, Clint, the main school building, not measure, just...
Far enough?
Yeah.
Zoom out for...
No, leave it there, hold on. Go one hundred and twenty-five feet off the front corner of the school building, to the north.
This corner to the north?
So you're gonna get into the street, the...
Knocking out the edge.
Of course, that's the point, you're, you wanna, what you'd really wanna do is go the seventy-five foot, wouldn't you? Just go that way.
Oh, that's what I was trying to do.
Yeah.
Uh, sorry.
Yeah, I asked you what you...
Seventy-five?
Yeah, because to me, what you really wanna do is seventy-five, and then go...
How far back?
About a hundred and twenty-five the other way, right?
What time are you on the position?
Yeah, wherever you...
I see, so, it would actually, I think, fit pretty well right there.
One twenty-five east?
Well, but not necessarily from the corner where you're on position.
Yeah, but that, right there's one, or right there's your seventy-five feet, or pretty close.
And all that, all that needs changed because of, I mean, that, that entire area needs drainage, major work.
Was this, was this for...
Well, um, practice, yeah, the practice might...
You know, these...
I think our biggest, our biggest concern has been making sure everything is enclosed, I mean, is more or less enclosed in the building, and having access without having to go outside. I mean, that's, that's been a lot of the concern, people have told me anyway, that, you know...
I think that we need to look at doing it that way.
What are you gonna do with your classroom that you just wanted to put right here?
Well, that's what we're measuring in between the buildings.
Oh, just...
In between the multipurpose and your, and your...
Oh, over on this side.
Well, like going where you go straight out that corridor, and then you just have classrooms there, instead of...
Give me the dimensions of the practice gym, one more time.
It's...
Seventy-five by one twenty-five approximately, right?
Yeah.
So we're talking seventy-five, this, this is just, I'm just gonna go ahead and say it.
We'll be going seventy-five north.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're not gonna start it out.
No.
You're gonna start it back here somewhere.
Yeah.
All right. If you're doing that.
All right, right here? No.
Where's, where's the...
Where that pickup is pulled, that's a pickup.
That's pretty close.
Yeah, right there.
So that's, yeah...
That's the backside of the, that's the wall.
Where the wall is.
Yeah.
The doorway out there's where that pickup's at.
Yeah.
So you're probably gonna wanna catch the doorway, aren't you?
Yeah, I would, I would think so.
You probably wanna move going over a little further, but...
I guess, they could, they could build an entryway there too, maybe, it might be better that way, you can go one way or the other.
And then where are we at here, one oh five?
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five. Am I calling that close enough?
That's pretty good.
Yeah, that puts it almost equal to the multipurpose building.
That's, that, that looks a lot like the architectural plan from the seventies that showed the auditorium going out that direction, which, would it be, those windows were designed to be, that's not a bearing wall in there, would it be good at all to consider taking those out and tying that in that way for a reason?
I would prefer, I think, to leave it in front of the school as it is.
Leave it as it is.
Well, we're talking about having a entrance, a security vest, we won't change in that entrance anyway, you know?
Yeah.
Out there in the front, and so...
Well, I think, I...
Hey, what are you gonna do, Mindy, what are you gonna do, I mean, are you still thinking, now you, if you put it over there, are you still thinking about your weight room on the back of it?
I don't think it makes any difference.
Well, I mean, you, I still think that, you know, they've got on here track storage, there's a, a piece out here.
Oh, yes, yeah.
You know, and that's, I guess we didn't measure out that, but, because that's actually further than the hundred and twenty-five foot, if you see that, like track storage there.
It doesn't say where it is, does it?
It's like twenty foot more, I mean...
Yes, twenty. Twenty, nineteen.
That's my only concern, is I think we need to have, whether we, you know, have it in that facility, or, or, you know, put it back in our, our facility we have now, we need to have a weight room where the girls are able to participate in a weight program without having to talk, you know, with the football program to use it.
Absolutely.
Okay, these classrooms you're talking about building, what kind of classrooms are they gonna be?
Well, the last we were talking about, the, the two classrooms in the hallway would be safe rooms, that was the last discussion.
Are they gonna be elementary classrooms, they're gonna be high school classrooms?
We actually talked about moving it to three or four classrooms...
Right.
To accommodate the...
Yeah, we were, we were four with two classrooms that were...
If we do four, it would make sense to make it high school.
Well, and that's the thing, is it doesn't really matter what, what you're making it for, because you can move around whatever classrooms you have.
For your, for your lower elementary, they've gotta have, I think it's, you gotta have water in the classroom, I think you absolutely have to, I think it's...
Well, they said, they said if we built these, we would have to have bathrooms in them.
Yeah.
Just because of the safe room part.
Right.
So you're gonna have water. But now, now, you're limiting yourself to elementary, Mr. Merweather, you better pop off if you got something, because this is all elementary, right here, so, you know, you don't need high school, you go all the way around and come in here and do high school, go all the way through our elementary and back out here, right?
But you also have the backside of the science classroom is right there too.
Do what now?
You also have that sci, I mean, your science classroom's right there, so what's...
Where's the science classroom on there?
The science classroom is right by that corridor, that's the door to the back door of the science classroom.
They come in science from here, they don't come in here, but there's a door to the science room right here.
Right, so if you went through, you can also, I mean, you could actually have a corridor on the, on the east side, I mean, we have a back door, I mean, this door right here, could you not have the corridor coming into here if you want it to be, you know what I'm saying? But yeah, I mean, before you, you build those, you'd need to decide, okay, with those four classrooms, what are you gonna do, because, but you could actually access both, both cor, I mean...
Well, I'm just saying you don't want four grade school classrooms over there off the side of your high school.
High school, yes, I agree, I agree.
Well, but, you know, I'm getting in the way here, but, but right here is right where we're at, there's a door right here, but if you built this as a corridor like we were talking about over there, you know, this is the back door right here to the high school hall, that there's, I mean, because there's, this comes out, because your, don't your home air room, doesn't that extend farther out than the...
Uh-huh, yeah. Home air room's always there.
Yeah, so it extends out anyway.
On the back side.
I just, I much prefer that setup like that, I think that we can make that practice gym, finish it, look similar to the multipurpose building, they'll look like sister buildings, like it was meant to be that way. I think the classrooms will work there, and I think we'll be able to bring the track closer to the...
Track closer to there, where that...
Yeah, where it'll work. But it's not, it's behind the...
So what, basically, this L-shaped area is for the classroom?
Yeah, anywhere from there all the way to the front.
Okay.
We've got a main gas...
Because you could actually...
What about the water that runs through there?
You got a water line running through there.
Well, that's what I was asking, if that was a drainage...
Water, gas, everything runs right through there, and I know you can't to the building. You're not gonna bury them for a building.
So we have water and gas service right there?
Right there, your natural gas and your water right down through there.
Running in from the highway, or is it running in from the back?
From the highway.
Yeah, from the highway.
That's up in the front.
Where's the service at, all the way at the back of the building somewhere?
Right there.
Is it the gas service right here where the hand is?
Yeah, that's the gas there, right there.
And then tees off and goes to both buildings?
Yeah. And goes all the way over to the football.
Yeah, all the way to the football field from right there, 'cause we figured that out last week.
And it comes in from the...
Front.
Front.
How close is it to that multipurpose building?
We had to move it.
Fifty feet.
We had to move it?
I think the meter's set right out, about where that...
Oh, yeah, you did, didn't you?
About where that canopy, somewhere along there, that...
Yeah.
So we...
It's not a long ways away from the building up at that, well, I don't know, ten feet maybe?
From this, from this building?
Right. Yeah.
But it was down inside, when we go to your, my left.
It's twenty feet from the corner. And the line that comes in that services this meter comes right through here?
I would rather move the lines than, than abandon that location.
Well, first thing you need to talk to your architects.
Yeah.
See if it's even feasible to build a building right there.
Yeah, because it is tight.
Anybody have to knock that burn down? I'm looking at... I'm wondering if we can have, when we knock that down, with those walls and everything.
You're still gonna have to knock the burn down on the north side if you're building that way anyway.
Yeah, but what's the walls gonna be like? I mean, it's gonna seem fine.
They're cement block walls.
It should look just like this.
Yeah, just like this amount of time.
But on the other side of it, there's probably an insulating board of some kind, I can see parts of it around the building.
Go ahead and zoom out again, Clint.
Okay.
Another place would be, but then you changed the front of the building, would be to bring your classrooms off the front of the school equidistant to the new gym.
This way?
Yeah.
And this way?
Yeah.
What if you, uh, took that tech ed building out, put your classrooms back there?
Yeah, that too.
I would just as soon do that.
That's just a metal building back there.
That we've brought in from,
Yeah.
because you could always move, um-
There's nothing right around there, I mean, that, that is a drainage nightmare, but it's gonna have to be addressed also regardless.
How big is that tech ed building right there, Clint? If you measure that.
Looks pretty big from there, doesn't it?
275, 70.
About 40? 45?
So are we talking about, or what, what you guys are talking about is that a disconnected building not attached to here, but in this vicinity right here?
No, I would attach it.
I would attach it, it's just that it's, that tech ed building's in the way.
Take it, take it building out.
So we're talking about essentially maybe just right through here?
Um, I would definitely-
'Cause you've already gotta resprinkle the gym anyway, so it's not gonna matter if you attach to that or not, right?
It don't matter where you put it, you're gonna sprinkle it.
Yeah, well, but I mean, you can add, you've already got to sprinkle the gym, so it doesn't matter if you attach to the gym.
What he was saying before was if we attached to that grade school building, we would have to sprinkle it.
Doesn't matter, 'cause you're sprinkling it anyway, if you do the other side, yes.
So this, this gas service right here goes into this building, in this vicinity?
And it probably goes straight-
Will it, where will it enter into this building here?
It, it's right close to that sidewalk.
This, this sidewalk?
Yeah, the one by the tech ed building, there's a sidewalk there.
This one?
Yeah.
So it goes pretty close to that?
Yeah.
Where, where's its entry point into, into the main building?
I think it's over by the, the home egg room, which would be underneath that concrete square.
Right in here?
Isn't there a meter right there?
I can't remember.
And where is the furnace?
Well, if you're talking about-
Is it, is it here?
The boiler, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Boiler.
It's in the hallway of the high school.
Yeah, it's, it's where those cannon deals are right there, somewhere in that vicinity.
Okay.
Very close.
So if we, if we had, if we had to come in at an alternate location, like, right, uh, would it be the corner, we'd be coming in the corner of this classroom right here, wouldn't we? In and around, would that be, would that be a big hurdle to get across? Would that be a constraint to having the classrooms in here, because?
What are you gonna do for a tech ed building, man?
Well, we talked about moving that stuff into the grade school, in the, the grade school building if we move classrooms out of there. I mean, 'cause what Mr. Taggert was saying was, there's very few programs anymore with the tech ed. Are we gonna be able to have a teacher as soon as ours retires? 'Cause they're going to the STEM.
Yeah, but, in, in, in reality, what, what's the likelihood that it's going to develop into, I mean, really, is education gonna get to the point to where these things that we used to call wood, chalk, metal, don't exist anymore?
Well, they've all moved to the technology space.
Yeah, they, they don't exist anymore.
I, I know, but they've kinda morphed into tech ed. And then we're saying that tech ed is gonna morph into STEM.
Yeah.
No, no.
If it's gonna be in the local high school, it's gonna be a STEM program, which is gonna be a math teacher or a science teacher.
What they're wanting is they're moving all the tech ed programs to the tech centers.
Yeah.
To the technology centers.
Automotive economics and carle trees, I think they're already up there.
And so they're moving it along your high schools.
We just have to do a good job of making sure that the students that need that get there.
This was, knowing the nature of this building right here, uh, this is essentially just a, a barn that any of us would be happy to have, this just happens to be finished out on the inside. This would be a great vehicle coverage shelter, things like that. And that's pretty low on the price, I believe, compared to where classrooms would be to be.
It's, uh, not attractive, so we would have to remain, I mean, if it was, you know, if it was to be moved and relocated in.
It'd be best to be relocated at the ag farm or somewhere like that to, to put your-
It's already been done, moved once.
Yeah, someone told me it'd been moved before, that they moved it.
From Rose Valley.
Yeah.
And the greenhouse location is?
Just on the other side of that container.
Yeah, right there.
Right here, okay.
Okay, zoom out now one more time. Well.
Too far?
No, that's fine.
Now, if you're putting the classrooms in the back, it's gonna end up being for high school.
I think it probably should be for high school.
I'm inclined to think that, too, just because of where it's at.
Yeah, I don't-
Where are you having your, like, what you have in the middle classrooms now, you've moved to elementary, right? Like, history has moved to-
Yeah, that's right. Next door.
This room, this hallway, instead of in the middle.
I mean, that's fine, I'm just saying, just making that statement that that will, and what'll have to happen there then is our English room and, and, uh, some of our middle school room in this other hallway will have to become elementary. If, I mean, if we're gonna get everybody out of the, the middle building over there, the kindergarten and all that.
What do you have down that hallway over there? You have? Fifth grade?
Fourth.
Fourth.
Four, two first grades, four, third, second.
We talked about the, the kindergarten building right now, about potentially putting a roof on it and keeping it. I'm more concerned with getting the kids out of the bus barn than the elementary.
I've talked about the teachers, and they're happy to be there.
Oh, I bet they are.
Because they've got their own bathrooms, they've got, you know, they run their own show there, they like it. And I've had people complain that they wanted their kids separated from the other kids, and it's worked out real well that way.
Yeah.
I talked about old teachers this last week. You're always gonna have kids in the bus barn anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're not gonna lose them.
'Cause your ag classroom's out there.
I'm more thinking because there's fifth graders walking across there, like, if they get sent to go to the library, fifth grader's not always responsible enough to go to the library. And that's a fact.
Okay. Um, the reason I did that is I'm just trying to guesstimate a potential square footage of building space because we are talking about the possibility of a a geothermal system. And I'd actually reduce that down to, it's like 55,000 square feet. You know, when the architect was here, they were talking about those well grids. If we're gonna heat and cool that way, your heat exchange is like a heat pump. The method of exchanging the heats, the water that circulates down through those loops, those grids are on 20, on a 25-foot spacing.
Yeah, but they were talking about a hybrid. And I don't think the hybrid uses near as much.
That, that's, even though they've talked about a hybrid, a hybrid could be like a hybrid car where it runs on gas part of the time, electric part of the time.
I'm sure that's what it is.
It could be, yeah, it, it could be that. The cost of that, I, I don't know what it is, I don't know if the efficiency isn't enough to justify the cost. 'Cause we, we hadn't even seen those kinds of numbers yet, but, but the only reason I'm saying that is because if we're looking at, um, maybe the potential of an 81-ton requirement on air conditioning or heating this facility, that's 81. On, on a traditional geothermal system, that's 81 wells on a 25-foot grid, that takes a lot of space to do that. That, that's part of the, here, and this is, this is something that we-
Well, I, I, you know, I think that's all, that's part of our, once we, um, hire your, yeah, once you hire your architects and, and-
Would you rather see it on the front side?
Well, here's my question is, is if we're putting it in the back, we have to do something in the front, because I don't wanna spend a big, what, money myself and not know that we did anything. We've got it all hidden in the back.
We're gonna put a new, we're gonna put a new corridor in here.
Right. Well, you're gonna have a best of view of the entrance.
Just making it from the corridor over.
That, that's, that's what I-
And just redo the front part of the school, make it even with that.
That's what I was talking about, because over here at this-
What is, what is that distance, Clint?
Here's the thing, if you at least put two rooms in the front and two rooms in the back, that's okay.
Then you can have elementary, and then you can have two elementary and two high school.
Yeah. And I think that would be doable.
You want to know the square footage or the-
No, I wanna know the distances from there, from the corner of that.
To your front.
To our entryway, probably, I don't know, a little over from our entryway.
'Cause that, I mean, you're gonna have to do the entryways, so, so you don't, it's not gonna all be classroom right there.
Right.
See, also to consider if we're putting that glass wall-
How far is that right there?
That's 45 foot.
Which is
Yeah.
real good.
Yeah, I mean, that's a pretty good size.
Yeah, but, well, this one, they were doing 48 by 68 is what the two classrooms that they have, but-
Well, what about this way, Clint? Down to the front of the building, or down to the-
Yeah, from that-
To the sidewalk.
That corner to the sidewalk. Right there. Yeah.
Probably a little bit past it, because we're gonna be building this corridor the other side of it, right?
Yeah, but, but you want your classroom to be about the same size as what they talked about, the two, yeah, so there's plenty of room for, 'cause there's, the classrooms, they, when they had the two, were 48-four by 68-four.
How many square feet is that?
And that was for, um-
3,000?
If you, if you did that, if you-
Okay.
Okay, you're talking about putting two classrooms here, classroom, classroom, 3,500.
Right.
Okay, well, if you did that, you could make some kinda-
Your vestibule.
Yeah, exactly, that's, that's what I was-
That would go, you'd come in here, you'd go down the hall, you'd go to the-
And that would still be your, your security entrance.
And it could all be built at the same time and more structured.
What do you think about that, Mr. Taggert? Do you think that that's?
Well, that takes care of Mr. Meriwether's needing, needing.
Couple of elementary classrooms.
Student class, this classroom.
Okay, would this give us the options of, uh, right, right where this glass partition's gonna be between the gym and the commons area? It would be right under, right at this wall?
Yes.
Right.
When that comes out, that's gonna be that entire trophy case, something's gonna have to be-
Right, moved.
And-
Yeah, but you're not, you're not, you're not affecting what we were gonna do on that anyway, because this wall's still about where it's at, so the trophy case comes right here.
To move to right here.
You take those glasses out, because now you're gonna have a room, that'd be, that'd be turned into a wall, and that'd be your trophy case.
Okay.
That wouldn't have nothing to do with anything.
Right, you wouldn't wanna see through there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that does away with your, all your glass there in the front, where you don't need it anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, you could do that.
And then where would you put your other two classrooms still in the back? Would you still need to move?
What is this, this approximate square footage if you went to the top side, the north side of the, or, uh, north side of the sidewalk, up along? Say the classrooms ended there?
Yeah, 82.
That's 82 feet, and it was, what, 45 in?
Yeah.
45 forward.
Well, that's enough room to build what they've got drawn here.
Yeah, I mean, it's within three, three foot wide, wide, and that they could-
It'd be it.
Yeah.
Be 3,700 square feet?
Which is three classrooms?
Is that?
No, it's two classrooms.
Well, 'cause they had, see, they had the two classrooms in your bathroom, and I don't know if they-
Oh, no. 125 people per thousand square feet.
Right, that was for the safe room.
So if we built that as a safe room, it would hold approximately 375 people.
And that's another thing, if we decided, I mean, we were talking about making three of those classrooms if we put it up there as a safe room, because we weren't sure that 250 would be enough, right?
At the thousand square feet, if we have 3,700, we would be at 375.
If you put them in the front like that, or, like you said, you have to have a bathroom if you're building it as a safe room, right?
Yes.
They have to have a bathroom in there.
I would think that that would hold 375.
It's gonna be five feet, five square feet for, per human.
Per kid, yes.
And they can make the hall-
But they also said the hallway could be considered.
So you could have enough, that was right, that was putting it at 300.
That was, yes.
With the hall and the two rooms. 'Cause we, we went, we went to the three rooms when we thought we needed to be more than.
Well, see, I mean, on this drawing, it looks like it's, it's, um, 350, 125 for each classroom and 100 for the hall. Is that not what you see on the next page?
Would it be better to make the practice facility as the storage shelter?
No.
I think it was a cost effective-
Cost, cost effective wise, it's not enough, because you have to build it so high.
Build, yeah, it's the height.
Isn't that what you're saying, Mr. Taggert?
No, they-
Is that 350 on that? 'Cause it shows 125 for each classroom and 100, safe room, it's capacity.
Yeah, that's what it's got on here, I didn't, I, I didn't think that we-
How many square feet, Clint?
But that's plenty.
37, 50, 38, oh, that one.
Because we got 250 kids and 40 some employees, so.
Square feet.
300 feet, right now.
125 kids.
That's an eight feet, but you gotta subtract a wall out of it, too.
Right.
But it probably gives you the five. The classrooms are gonna have this, and the kids are already sitting.
Right. Well, how, um, um, can you move it south just a little bit? How much farther, uh, No, the other, I'm sorry.
Oh, the other way.
Yeah.
The other south?
Yeah, the other south. I mean, down to me is south. How much farther out from the north edge of that, um, where you've got your red line, is the, is the blacktop?
From here.
From that corner to the blacktop.
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five foot. Cause that's what I wondered, if you moved that up and then built one more.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. Go ahead and move it twenty-five feet out further.
Move that out further and then you'd have room for your three classrooms that we talked about.
That's true.
On the backside of the practice facility?
Well, on the front of the school, I mean, if you move that practice facility north, that, to your blacktop.
Clint, can you move your whole red square?
Enough room for.
That's probably a good idea. Because we, I don't know how, I know what it is.
Or just extend that.
With this gym right here and have the classrooms by it when we're testing, that is like.
It's loud.
Yeah, that's a problem. So it'd probably be good if it wasn't necessarily lettered up against, cause we've got two classrooms right there, you're talking about putting the third one right there.
Mm-hmm.
Will this work to kinda capture what we're?
Uh, kind of.
Everybody.
You're gonna have to delete the, I don't know.
You talking about this tied all the way back down here?
What?
Well, you about have to.
Yeah, you about have to, yeah.
Space in there, so.
And that's.
I mean, what it is, what it is, you're gonna have to end up making that bigger.
Yeah.
Well, that side, yeah. And it could be that that's this corner down here is more. See, and then you.
Like that?
Yeah, but then you want this. Yeah, and that red line there going from the corner would be farther up.
It'd be twenty-five feet further north. Yeah.
Yeah. So. Yeah, you'd have a.
So it would essentially kinda be like this?
Yeah.
Right.
And then, and then this is the practice gym?
Yeah.
Classroom, classroom, classroom. Three.
New corridor.
Yeah.
There, I mean, there's your weight room.
Well, I think so too, that's that little side, that little edge.
Back of the cafeteria.
Yeah, like right here?
No. No, the.
Well, when you're.
See, if you move that gym up, the gym line's gonna be right here.
And it would be between.
So you gotta have, you got something here.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I guess you could just leave your berm if you wanted to and make, you know, right from the sidewalk, have your three rooms, one, two, three, and, and just leave that. But if you wanna take that out and make that connected, then you've got that much.
I think it'd be a good place.
That much space to have.
That way to.
Here.
Wherever, from wherever that is.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I, that's what I think y'all are saying. I don't know if that's right, but.
Right.
Well, do you want me to take?
I think.
Everything you said, try to get it to them to.
I like that.
Change it up and let me, let us look at them, and they can do the same thing.
Same thing.
Like they said Tuesday morning when I, I talked to them, you know, whatever we wanna do, they'll, they'll draw something up and. And move the track over close to the multipurpose building.
Close by the multipurpose building.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Let me, let me show you something real quick on that.
Yeah, I better write that down too.
This is the track at Laverne. Laverne's got one of the narrowest tracks. The only ones that's narrower is probably Covington Douglas that I know of.
And that's why the bleachers are close there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now if, uh, that is that is exactly the dimension of the track at Laverne. It doesn't go, it doesn't encumber or get into anything other than the fieldhouse, which we're talking about replacing that anyway. And the football field moves over just a small amount to still be centered within that track, so we're not talking about movement of the field. Or really a big problem in viewing. I mean, we're just talking about and it. There are, there are so many, there are so rare occasions that the football, that the track is not around the football field. I've got probably fifty locations of school systems in this part of the state and there may be three or four.
On the home site, it wouldn't affect if it was built those dimensions as far as viewing.
Let me show you something else too while we're here.
The visitor's side would.
Because this is something that was done. Higgins, Texas, it's just a nineteen-minute drive west of Shattuck. This was probably the most recent track built. See where they put their football field? They scooted it over to the home site. This is what Higgins, Texas looked like last year. That's what it looks like this year. Very, very small school. But they kinda, they, they brought everything to the home site, so. And if I could, um, just make the comparison. I'll go over to Laverne. The situation at Laverne is this school system could cause they've done it, they've bounced between eleven man and eight man. When they go to eleven man, they have to increase the width of that field to fifty-three feet. That essentially takes up most of their space inside here. This is a forty-foot wide field. And they've got it centered. But if you go to Okeen, for example, just kinda burn that image in your mind. And we can go look at a vastly different track. This, this was built just a few years ago, it's not very old. This track configuration is the curves are shorter together, the curves are more rounded. And the straightaways are shorter. But Okeen also plays eleven man football right now. And their field. They've done this because, I'm, I'm guessing because that's the regulation width if you're playing eleven man, fifty-three point something.
We do have two big drawbacks of putting it in there. One thing is the gate is usually locked.
Right.
And, and that's a big problem. We can't be locking people out of the track if they wanna go walk.
Every, every facility that I know of, because we go to every day after school somewhere. Woodman, for example, is gates locked at four-thirty every day. You, you want to lock your facilities in some situations. If, I don't know if they've had a vandalism problem, but in, in some places, you'll, and Scott and Tim were talking about this this week at Covington, that, that what, what they would like to see is like a, a walkthrough gate, a gate that where you can't get a motorcycle through, you can't get a car, but a person can walk through. And just have that, you know, those are those types of gates. And have that open to where there's not a gate to lock it or not lock it, and if there's ever a vandalism problem, then you have to address it, but you wouldn't want just the thing wide open where somebody could come in with a car and do something bad, you know, that, that, that's the reason for locking them.
Do you happen to have Cherokee, their latest?
No, I don't have Cherokee. There's not a, a satellite picture yet, but I can show you, I can show you one. This is what Cherokee will look like. Greensburg, Kansas just did this not too long ago. That's what Cherokee will look like when there's a satellite picture of it. That's in Greensburg. Oh, I can run over to Covington. This is prob, this is the narrowest track that I know of and you can kinda see that's pretty tight curved. And there. Whoops, I shouldn't have done that. Can't really, it's not the right time of the year to see the football field, but that, that's the closest that I know of, that where you've got your football field to your stands.
Yeah, sitting on their home, in their home, they, uh, home stands, it's.
Not bad at all.
It's very similar to what it is sitting on ours.
Yeah, and you can see by ours, ours.
It's tight enough, I imagine their players are probably on the track at times. The football players are probably on the track at times, uh, when they're not playing.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I see, you know, some good things about putting that track, you know, at the football field, but also if you have it up there by the multipurpose building and you've got a practice field in it, you know, we, we have.
Eliminates a lot of problems.
That eliminates all that soccer stuff on it, it eliminates all those little kid football teams on it when the big kids are out there playing football, and so.
And if we wanted to lock that off, the chain link that off, you're not talking.
Yeah.
Like you said earlier, you're talking about pinching, right in the grand scheme of this thing.
To, to fence it?
To fence it.
Well, it'll certainly probably have to be fenced and like, oh, you have only walk-through gates.
Yeah. Well, you know, the one we had, you can see the outline of it here, we never did fence it, but it wasn't a problem that I know of.
Oh, it was when I was in school. I mean, there's every group's got the one kid who took their pickup out there. But, I mean, just to keep vehicles and stuff like that off of there, I mean, you don't have to have a six-foot chain link fence.
I would rather see the, the track over there by the multipurpose building. I just think it will cure a lot of time issues, I mean, with, with the other where you know, the soccer teams and the, and the flight football teams.
I'd just take.
Will have an area that they can always go to practice.
I'd just take the peel-up grass on the football field and we just spent all the money and we did level on it and re-sanding it and starting over.
That wasn't that much. That wasn't that much, right? I was talking to Tim about, I asked him if it would upset them at all with that irrigation system and he was like, no, that was all free. The, the pipe was essentially purchased by the school and the kids put the pipe in, Pioneer Telephone ditched all the lines, so it was pretty much a free labor deal anyway. We need to also consider what this, what, what these types of things are gonna bring onto us maintenance-wise. And that's one of the reasons I like it, I like the track on the football field is it's, it's just a better better place to maintain it. If you start looking at the square footage, that somebody's gonna have to mow.
Well, see, and I'm looking at it the other way, the square footage over there, if it's over there, we don't have near as much to mow. Cause you're gonna mow the football field, yeah, you're not gonna mow the path.
You have to mow the.
You're gonna mow the inside and we have to mow the football field anyway. And right now, we're mowing that entire area. And I think.
Right here?
Yes. And so if you've got the track, then all you're, you're gonna have to be mowing now is the inside because you're gonna have some, you're gonna have your concrete, your sidewalk around the track. And, uh, I think it's gonna cut down a lot of your maintenance where we've already got the maintenance on the football field, we're already taking care of that. And, uh, I just think it's gonna
I think if you put a track there. I think when and if you put a track there, you're gonna have your mowing down substantially. You're cutting, you're mulling times especially. Just because the, the sheer surface area of your track, your concrete, your fiddle cement and everything else, it's gonna take a lot of that up, plus it's gonna get rid of a sloop.
I don't think I have a preference either way. Clint, you I can tell one in the football field, why?
I'm an engineer. And I can pretty much tell you what a geotechnical portal would look like. The water issues coming off the housing development off the back of the school, and I'm just giving you my professional opinion.
So you think it's gonna be a nightmare?
Well, it can be fixed, but I just know what's expensive and what's not expensive. Essentially, the dirt project to put it on the football field would be less than what it took, took to build my house. It's, it's not, there's a five-foot differential between the goalpost and so you'd be looking at a net move of dirt of two and a half feet. Which is not near the project of that one. Um, I know on that site, there is a reserve pit somewhere there, which I would have to, I would before I built anything on it, I'd wanna know where it was at. I don't wanna remediate it, I wanna stabilize it. Then you've got all the water issues coming off of there, which that is, that handles a lot of water. If you do that, you're gonna have that track at a pinch point and you're gonna have to deliver all that runoff water that we're talking about into the drainage behind and the architect was talking about a oh, what, what was the word they were using? It wasn't an open drainage, it was basically.
It's an underground cover, basically.
Yeah, basically an underground cover. I just don't typically like those. They don't ever really drain what you want them to drain. They can plug. And usually the most common complaint in residential areas when you do those types of drainages is the skunks that they accumulate. And it doesn't sound like a big deal, but if, you know, you have a residential area with a lot of these drainage control things, they've usually have a lot of skunks and that's probably complaint number one. So. It can be done. I just, there's a cheaper way and a more expensive way and I see that as being more expensive, but. And another thing, I'm not real sure exactly where that pipeline goes. I just never feel comfortable building anything on top of the natural gas pipeline. Which it comes my guess is. Is that what it does? Through there? I think it comes on the backside of this pond and it seemed like it went right through here.
I think you're looking at over here. This is where your pipeline. I think that area there is where your pipeline ditch was.
Here?
No, see this brown, if you can see? Out there? Right there. I think that's where it's coming. Cause that looks like.
It looks like it, just where Steve's driving. Let me, uh, let me back up a date. That was basically an oh-eight deal, wasn't it? We may be able to see it. Could that be it right there? But I'm not seeing it over here. I know it came across us at an agable. That looks like a ditch there.
But I think that's that's again, something that, um, once we hire the architects, that they, they will you know, look at your site plan and, and, uh, show us where those those areas are. areas are, um... I mean, that's... Call O'Keen in 24 hours, okay?
What about, what about, is, if we were to do, are, are we talking about putting another set of bleachers over here?
Well, what they had was on the south side, but, um, they could always be on, I mean, because that's what these are here, bleachers.
So, would we be talking about duplicating, those are essentially just visitors bleachers, would we be talking about duplicating our football field stand bleachers?
Oh, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say a, uh, grandstand.
So, we would...
I would say you'd be having a, you know, kind of like the, the smaller bleachers.
So, we wouldn't, our intention would be not to host a meet if we were to have a track?
Uh, we hosted meets there for years and years without a grandstand.
Yeah, but it's, that was manual timing, it's changed a lot now.
Yeah, but you would just have to have a tower, right? You wouldn't have to have a grandstand.
Yeah, you don't have to have a...
Well, I just look at the sheer numbers, there's more parents that sit in the stands than, than would accommodate, you know? You just go to track meets, you didn't see what I'm talking about. They like to sit and watch. It just, I, I just want to make sure we're thinking of everything. Here, we wouldn't be reduplicating that cost. It doesn't make sense, because a track will generate considerable amount of revenue to pay for the resurfacing. I mean, that's where it's, it cash flows better than most events do, because of the number of people that come to them. So...
You hold a track meet, that's going to be a lot of wear and tear on your ball field, too, though.
Well, that's, a lot of ball fields that do it every year. They seem to be okay.
A lot of tracks are around ball fields, too, though.
Most tracks are around ball fields.
Sharon's isn't.
Which one?
Sharon's isn't, is it?
Shattuck's isn't.
Sharon doesn't have a track, Shattuck doesn't have a track.
Shattuck has a track over there by the, uh, baseball field, maybe?
Uh, I don't think they do. The only ones that I know that don't do that are Kingfisher, um, Kingfisher ceiling. Well, I'll tell you what, here's one, I shouldn't, this is, this is Hennessy, this is new construction that's going on at Hennessy right now. That's Hennessy in '08. Two thousand and ten, they started construction of the track over here. Two thousand and eleven, they've got their base down, and they, they've, they do have a track, they just went bigger on this side. And two thousand and thirteen, track's completed now. They've got stands, they've dedicated this whole facility to track with the stands, and then they've got a duplicate facility over here with their old track. And to me, I, I mean, that, that's, that's one rare occasion that the track is not going around the football field, but they've duplicated their stadium and actually have a bigger stadium on the track side than they do on the football. But when you go to track meets, for example, a fifth and sixth grade track meet, there will be more people, there will be more parents in the stands than you'll see at a football game. So, I could see why the bigger stadium would be justified. It's, it's, they're a pretty big event.
So, um, are we all ready to go ahead and, um...
There's no way to get a, an accurate estimate of a cost difference between the two, is there?
Well, like you said, there's no numbers that are in the, general numbers, but until you let out something for a bid.
Well, I think the general numbers they gave us would probably be, the only difference being how many bleachers we put up.
Let me ask, let me ask this, because this is really, if we're talking about architects, were both firms basically going to charge the same amount, was it a percent of the construction?
I don't know. Yeah, it's a percent, yes, it's a percent.
I know BWA's 10 percent, do you, do you know what the other?
I think, I, as far as I know, they're all right there to get the same percentage as.
The next item was for the board to take action on the employment of Stephen H. McDonald and Associates as financial consultant to the school district. They're your bonding firm, correct?
Correct.
That does your financial, and you've talked to, uh, what did you say, Mac, Mac, or somebody with them, but...
Mark, um, Matt Riker.
Yeah.
He's their, he's the representative for our area.
And he's the one that does, I mean, Stephen H. McDonald is the one that does most of the bonds in this area?
Yes. He does most of the bond in the state of Oklahoma.
In the state of Oklahoma. So, are we ready to take action on the employment of Stephen H. McDonald?
That would be my recommendation, that's who I'm going to work with.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Please, second.
Stephen McDonald?
Okay, Clint made the motion, Don's second, and, uh, Don, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
I vote yes, right?
Yes.
Clint?
Yes.
Okay, number six, board to take action on the employment of Boynton Williams and Associates as architects for the school district. Mr. Tackett, what's your recommendation?
That'd be my recommendation, and, and basically, because they work with Joe Hall, and I think that's...
That's the way to go.
That's the way to go.
I'll make the motion. Williams, Boynton Williams?
Andy made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Don's second, and, uh, Andy, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes, right?
Yes.
Clint?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Okay, board to take action on the employment of Joe D. Hall, General Contractors LLC as general contractor for the school district. Mr. Mo, uh, Tackett, what's your...
My recommendation is to hire Joe D. Hall.
Good question. What are we getting into as far as cost goes? We don't do anything, we don't pay anybody, right?
No, no, nothing. And we can back out of this, we can, we can, we can build a, we can end up just building a bathroom or something. We're not, we're not obligated for one thing at this point.
At this point, okay. Because I know, I realize the architects, at some point, we're going to have to start paying them when you're ready to start drawing, or putting it on.
Right, but right now, right now, we're not obligated at all for not one cent. And we can back out down the road if we don't like what they're drawing. We can back out and say we're not, we're going a different direction.
Well, they're going to draw what you want to draw.
Well, I know, I mean, that's what I'm saying, but if we just, we're just not satisfied with what we're getting, our results, we can, we can back out under no penalty, under nothing.
Okay, we have the recommendation to hire Joe D. Hall, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to hire Joe D. Hall as general contractor.
Second. Uh, I vote yes, Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Vote to Jaren, he says, or he can be in.
I'm going with Jaren. I'll say.
Uh, Clint, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Yes. Rick?
Yes.